So I think we'll find that my presentation is fairly short. We're very similar to most other transportation departments in that, other than salary, our biggest expense line comes from the equipment itself. We need the vehicles to haul the kids around, we need to keep them safe and efficient. As you guys, as most of you were here for, several years ago, we fell into a crisis with our vehicles. We've gotten ourselves back by buying some, some used vehicles, back to the number of vehicles we need. Now, we're working on the age of our vehicles. So, you'll see our budget still this year is built with the age of the vehicle in mind. We were working toward that seven or eight-year rotation plan, and we'll get back into that a little bit more later. But you'll see that the budget is built with the age of the existing vehicles, and if I can get to the next... Okay, so we, we currently have thirty-six vehicles in our fleet. That's big bus, small bus, and one suburban. Eleven of those vehicles are already ten or more years old. We have one that's eleven and one that's twelve years old. And we have another four that are seven and eight years old already currently. So, the budget really still, we have a couple lines that are still staying fairly high this coming year. The parts and supply line stays pretty high because it takes a fair amount of money to keep a bus that age in a condition that'll pass DOT inspection, which is pretty rigid. The equipment contract and repair line also stays rather high. That's the line we use when repair needs to be done that's outside of our capability, maybe some bigger bodywork, a transmission, something like that, that we don't have the facility for, or, or the, the knowledge for, the manpower to do it. So, we'll send our things away. Welding, bodywork is big to try to keep those older buses in a condition that the DOT inspector will accept. The goal for this upcoming year is to, to stick with that, the goal of getting us back into a rotation plan. So, I'm not sure if you guys saw the, the screen or not there, I might have forgotten to click, but the, the prior slide was the age of our vehicles. We have twenty-four Big Two wheelchair, because we did find that you cannot just have one because they do break down, and then you have a kid who can't get to school. So, we did buy a used wheelchair bus last year. We have nine small buses, which is convenient because we have exactly nine special ed runs. And, uh, we bought a suburban this year. Now, the suburban took a little bit of selling to get me to buy into that. I'm one that likes to have all the kids in a little yellow bus, but I'm finding that there is a great deal of benefit to having a suburban, because you'll have a kid who maybe has a, a pretty strong, um, environmental where they need air conditioning. And even though our little buses do have air conditioning, that air conditioner's way up in the front and the kids are in the back. You might have a kid who's a flight risk and you can lock the doors in the suburban so they, they can't try to escape. Kids who have a, um, you know, they break their femur or whatever, they can't navigate the bus steps, the parents can't get them to school, the suburban, they can get in and out of easily. So, we've actually found a lot of use for it this year. The goal for the upcoming year again is to continue replacing the vehicles to try to get that age of our older vehicles down. I'd like to stick with what we've done the last two years and get three large buses and two small. I would like to get one additional suburban, and then I think we would be done with the suburbans for a little while. We're actually finding that suburban to be a pretty hot ticket for a few of our kids that really have some specialized transportation needs. Our guys have a, a good maintenance plan, we undercoat all of our vehicles, it's really cut down on a lot of the rock that's underneath, so even though our buses are ten years old, we're, we're, they're still passing DOT relatively without issue because they've, the guys at the shop have done a really good job of preventing things from happening. So, we'll continue with that. And, the, the other thing that I want to touch on that really isn't part of building this year's budget, but something to think about, so, we have fifteen, so about half of our buses are seven years or older now. Unless we have some windfall and wet, we can buy six, eight, ten buses all at once. It's going to take us several years to get the, the buses into a relatively younger age. So, our goal is always to try to, to get rid of the oldest bus in the fleet, but then something happens like this year where a bus we thought we were going to have for another three or four years, that the engine went on it, the cost to, to replace it, and the work that it needed just was prohibitive. So, that one will be going, and that's one we thought we were keeping for a few years. So, I've been talking to a couple people, and this just kind of came up recently, within the last week or so. And we can talk about it more hopefully when, when I've been able to investigate a little bit more. But I started looking at what might happen if we try to bring that rotation down to more like five years or six years. So, the next slide, if I can get to it, is a cost estimate. Laura was kind enough to help out with this. So, this is, this year, if we buy buses this year, is about a hundred twenty-three thousand. If you factor in the state aid that we would expect to get back on that bus, the total bus that, what I call the out-of-pocket, or the local share, is about thirty-six thousand dollars. I did some digging, I talked to a couple bus vendors, looked at Auctions International, looked at some different websites. A, a five-year-old bus that's still in good shape is bringing thirty-five thousand dollars and up. So, right now, what's happening is the buses that we're trading in, we're getting about thirty-five hundred dollars for four thousand if we're lucky. By the time we're getting rid of them, they don't pass inspection anymore, and a lot of them are, are literally being towed out of here, or flatbedded out of here. So, if we could bring the rotation down to closer to five or six years, we, and, and we can get about thirty-five thousand back on it, if you think about it, we're, we're really almost not paying what I call out-of-pocket. We're getting as much back on a bus as we're, we're spending for it. So, in addition to that, over the last two years, and we'll continue to do this next part, but we've started buying a five-year warranty on the buses. Bumper-to-bumper, covers everything. It adds about three thousand dollars to the cost of the bus, but then what happens is the vendor gives us a parts credit that almost equals that three thousand dollar cost. And our mechanics can choose either to take a dollar value, dollar value part credit or a pallet of parts. So, that's actually what they chose the last couple of years. And, the vendor brings in, uh, wipers, brakes, belts, pulleys, just all that stuff that goes on the bus. And, they were good enough over the last couple of years, instead of just bringing parts for the couple brand-new buses, they bought, they brought in the pallet that would fit the rest of the fleet, because most of our buses are, are freightliner buses. So, the, the, the warranty itself really, in the end, ends up not costing a lot because we're using that parts credit or those parts that we would be having to buy the, our own wipers and everything for it. So, we'll continue on that, but it kind of fits into that idea of pushing toward a five-year plan, because if we've got a vehicle bumper-to-bumper warranty for five years, we sell it, trade it for almost what we're paying out-of-pocket for the bus, we can bring some of our other expenses way down, like that equipment contract and repair, the parts and supplies, the manpower that it takes, you know, our guys won't be running around crazy trying to, to get everything going all the time. So, yeah, I think there's a lot of benefit to looking into that maybe a little bit more. Like I said, I just started looking at it. I want to dig a little bit more. And, like I said, that's not part of building this year's budget, but maybe something we can start thinking about as we move forward. So, I guess, that's really it for me. This year's budget was built, you know, with the knowledge that we have an older fleet, the hope to, to continue to replace what we have, and the knowledge that we need to keep our equipment contract and repair and, and parts lines still fairly high for the next few years while we try to bring our bus age down a little bit. Questions?
I want to point out and help here. When we trade in that bus for thirty-five thousand, the local share is still only thirty percent of that. So, while it reduces the price of the bus, which is excellent, seventy percent of that reduces our state aid as it should, because we're paying less for the overall bus. But, it's still an excellent, excellent plan, because that way, we're not keeping buses on the road that are old and maybe not as safe as they could be, and we're also freeing up staff. And, it would be great to be able to, once in a while, not have to worry about a bus breaking down so much, and instead of getting a substitute driver, being able to put one of the mechanics on a bus run.
You were talking about, were you talking about national, about thirty-five thousand, are you not trading it in? Both? So, the, yeah, so I looked, I looked at a couple different places, and you can go on to some sites that are selling buses, and, and they're selling for higher than thirty-five. The, the bus vendor offered a thirty-five dollar, thirty-five thousand dollar value as what he would offer as a trade toward a new bus.
But if we went to the actual side?
We may get more, we may get less.
But the state doesn't recoup their share.
But the state doesn't see that money.
Oh, I see, okay.
And you can get the full aid on a bus, and then that money, when you sell the old one.
So, we would have to offset the expenditures for the transportation department by that sale to be in compliance with state aid regulations. They have a way to stop us from doing anything creative.
So, it would still be, I would, I would, I would, um...
So, all part of the investigating that we have to start doing, because I, I think there's a lot of benefit to looking at it, but I just started looking into this a couple days ago, Laura and I touched on it a little bit. So, a lot more to think about, but I think there's some value to earning more than thirty-five hundred dollars on a trade for a bus they have to haul out.
And I say that you did a great job, Mary, because that is really the thing that needs to be brought to the forefront, is the replacement cycle lowering the years lowers the expense of keeping these buses on the road, lowers, helps with, um, overtime costs, for example, if a bus breaks down, things like that. So, it was an excellent, excellent presentation. Thank you.
Mary, two questions, and you probably answered it. How many buses are you proposing, or what are you proposing to purchase this year?
Three large buses, two small buses, and a suburban, which is exactly the same plan we used for this current school year.
Which is about?
Five...
Five ninety?
Yeah, I think it's on the sheet there, I think it's about five twenty-five.
And then my second question to that one is, is, have you, have you tried to, to extrapolate out what it would take to get to a five-year rotation?
Well, looking at the seven-year rotation, I really, literally just started thinking about this a couple days ago, but at a seven-year, we're still about eight or nine years out. So, I mean, we're, we're not talking about quick fix unless we have, you know, a windfall. Yeah, exactly. But you have to start somewhere. It does.
Well, I, I'm sure that many of you were here, when, what Mary referred to, I don't know what year it was when a third of our fleet...
Probably two thousand fourteen, I think.
When a third of our fleet was taken off the road, and we certainly don't ever want to be in that situation again. So, I appreciate being where we are now. When it's cold and I send the buses out, I at least know that we have something that can go back up there and get the, a bus that's broken down, and I did not feel that way in two thousand and fourteen. I even remember stating on the robo-call, I don't have a spare bus to send out there if we have one break down, so I'm not sending, I'm not sending your kids to school. I remember that.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that's a tough show to follow. Okay, so, I don't have a PowerPoint. I basically have the numbers, and this is just the facts. So, um, obviously, I'm in charge of both the maintenance and the custodial side, and what you have in front of, in front of you is basically the, the budget that we're proposing for the nineteen-twenty, uh, school year versus where we were, where we are currently at and the eighteen-nineteen budget. Where our increases are, where our decreases are, and things that have stayed the same. So, everything that's marked S is the same, and everything that's increased is ICR, INCR, and anything that's decreased is DECR. So, what we're seeing is, other than in the equipment line, where I'm replacing things like a, a, the one-floor scrubber at the high school, um, for the most part, everything that is in my budget that is increasing is increasing primarily due to vendor costs, either in materials and/or labor, or through, um, just overall increases, um, and most of it is, is in supplies and, and things that we're going to be using. Now, I, I want to remind you that even though we went through twenty-two million dollars worth of renovation, um, we do have increased costs. We have a refreshment stand that needs attention. We have a fitness center that needs attention, and far more than the classrooms did. So, there's, there's additional supplies that are going to be needed to keep those, those areas up. So, with that, that is the justification for the increases in supplies. As far as the equipment is concerned, last year, we bought a loader, which is, was a pretty large expense. This year, I'm planning on getting rid of the first small loader we bought when I started here some twenty-two years ago, um, that now needs to be completely torn down and rebuilt in order to, to be functional. So, I'm looking to replace that and get rid of it while it still works. So, that's where, um, the, the equipment side of things has gone. Um, the largest decrease that we're going to see in the budget, in my budget overall, is in the operation of the plant, you're going to see a decrease of three-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars. And the reason for that decrease, if you remember, is that we got hit with the renovation to the BOSI's facility. For their capital project. And, I want to, you know, want to remind you that that falls within our two percent cap. It's not exclusive. So, that had to be shown in our budget, and it ended up in my portion of the budget, because that's really where it belongs. So, overall, there is a decrease, but there is an increase in what would be the normal portion of our budget had the BOSI's project not been in there. And, it's basically to invest more in, in our facilities. So, there's my budget in a nutshell. And, while I'm talking about the BOSI's project, I want you to know that, and Jen, this is something you might be interested in. Next week, I will be going to Albany again, and I've done this for over ten years now. Our state association goes there to lobby. And, we, we're pushing for a number of things, even though the governor rejected, um, recently the legislation that was proposed to him to exclude the BOSI's projects from the local district tax cap. Uh, we are going to continue to push on that, because we still feel that BOSI should be excluded. So, we're going there to lobby and meet with all of our local legislators from both sides of the aisle. We're also going to be talking about the building condition surveys, which are coming up this, 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 this year, I believe, in twenty-twenty. If you remember, we went through one almost five years ago. Seven hundred districts in the state all do it at the same time, and they all submit their proj, all their, their information to the facility's planning, so it overwhelms them. So, obviously, when they have that many things coming in at once to look at and have to deal with, that also pushes out capital project work. So, we're, we're proposing that we start staggering those, those submissions throughout the year. And it also opens up the opportunity for other districts to utilize architects like our architect, who has an extremely nice program for doing the building condition survey versus some other architectural firms. We're also concerned with the executive proposal to revamp the aid structure, and the reason we're concerned about that is because it's going to place a bigger portion of the cost of capital work on the local taxpayers. And, we really don't want to see that happen, so we're going to talk about that. And the other thing that we're going to also talk about, and you've heard me say this before, is the capital outlay projects. Currently, they're set at a hundred thousand dollars. We want to see that increase to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, so that obviously, we can accomplish more with those dollars. Right now, it's very difficult to get a lot done with a hundred thousand dollars, because you still have to pay the architects and engineers for their portion of the work. So, the first thirty or forty percent really is going in professional services. The other thing we're going to try and do is get those projects, those capital outlays, so you can do something in more than one building.
Yeah, can you, can you give a little more detail to that, David? Because I don't realize that everybody here understands that you're restricted to what you can do on a capital outlay.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to talk about that in a, in a second, because I'm, I'm kind of flowing that direction. Okay? So, um, obviously, if you can do more work with more dollars in more buildings, it allows you to accomplish, um, things that might be ailing in more than one facility. So, that's what we really would like to see, and that's the reason we're going to lobby. And all this really is like everybody that does lobby, it's, it's there for the kids, even though our focus is the facilities, but we're there to advocate for the kids through the facility side. So, that's what's important. Now, the capital outlay. I, I've been here a number of times talking about capital outlay and how that structure works, and obviously, we get our aid the next year for the hundred thousand dollars that we're going to spend. And again, we're restricted to one building. So, this year, what we're going to do is, we're going to be replacing the front sidewalk of the high school at the auditorium. We have to do some inside work, so we're going to replace some more doors, exterior doors, because we know that the frames are starting to rot out. And, we're also going to replace at least one ceiling. In this upcoming budget, we also have included, again, a hundred thousand dollars, and we plan to do more ceiling work. And what we want to do is, we want to try and get the entire ceiling span around the high school, uh, gymnasium pulled out and replaced, because it's in pretty sad shape, primarily because of the water leaking that we have now corrected. Yeah, so, um, we hope to get that done and spruce that area up, so it looks a whole lot better than it has looked for an awful long time. But, again, I know that in the past, I've been told that we have to, have to do some kind of a presentation on what the capital outlay project is, and I know there's nothing scheduled. So, essentially, I'm giving you the information now, and this is our, technically, our public hearing on capital outlay. So, if you have any questions on the budget, lobbying, or capital outlay, I'll be more than happy to talk, talk about them and see if I can answer those questions.
So, David, is it correct that we'll get seventy-two percent of that, a hundred thousand back next year?
Correct. Correct.
So, unlike a huge project that comes back in fifteen years, this one comes back the very next year, which is the, um, enticement for these projects?
Exactly. And the, the tough part is the, is the budgeting essentially the first year, because you're hooked for the whole hundred thousand until you get the aid back that following year. So, we, we are now into that process. The point is, you got to keep it up. Right.
I can remember when it first came, we weren't doing them, and then we put it into the budget for two thousand and fourteen, and it came out. So, I'm going to suggest that we really have only been doing these for some...
Four years?
Four years, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, it isn't huge, but you continue to peck away at it, and at least, you know, it's not a hundred thousand that's coming completely out of your, your basic budget. That's what's important here.
And, Mary alluded to that too, is that a number of years ago, everything was coming out of our general budget, because you get aid on a new bus, but you don't necessarily get aid on everything that you repair, am I right?
For the most part, there are some things that can be excluded, yes.
Right.
And the same thing in your department, too.
Well, and, and in the case of my department, really, construction is where the, the only place I really can garner and generate any aid. You know, the rest of it is, it's all pretty much basic budget.
David, can you talk to the board about the changes you've made this summer with getting summer helpers and your ability, so that they can understand why when we get to the salary piece, we're looking for summer helpers for painting inside the buildings to spruce things up?
Sure.
And why your guys can't get to that?
Right. Okay, so, um, we have three general mechanics and a labor, and we had, um, one labor that retired, and we recently replaced him with one of my cleaners. And, technically, what, what has happened over, over the years is that the maintenance guys have done pretty much everything, anything and everything. So, once the sports season hits, everything within the buildings really just kind of sits, because we're outside working on fields, we're outside mowing the lawn, and if Mother Nature's is being miserable and giving us a wet spring, the lawn doesn't stop growing. So, you start at one end of the district, and you go to the other end, and you trim, and then you're starting all over again. So, one of the things in the areas that we really haven't been able to do much in a long, long time is to spend any time painting. And I know every year, the teachers have asked, can we paint the room, can we paint the room? And there just is not enough time. There really is not. So, the, you know, the maintenance guys are working on the important things like the air handlers and the unit ventilators, and all those health and safety things that have to be looked at every year. So, painting kind of falls by the wayside. So, we budgeted to hire a few summer labors, people that we could, um, put a paintbrush in their hand, give them some direction, and say, okay, now go to it. And, we, we essentially budgeted for five labors, some to help clean and some to help paint, and unfortunately, we really didn't get a whole lot. We ended up with a couple. So, we did, we did accomplish quite a bit of painting, um, in classrooms, in hallways, and ironically, one of the painters is Brian and, and Mrs. Bergstaller from the GLP, their son. So, he loves to paint, which is kind of ironic, because his mom said, well, he doesn't do anything at home, but I, I find it interesting, but he does love to paint. So, as he's going, going to college now, any of this spare time now, he's back here helping us by continuing to paint. So, I met with him today on a couple of more rooms that we really want to get spruced up, uh, as, as either meeting rooms or whatever classrooms are available, and he's continuing to paint. So, I want to keep that program up. I want to try and get five more people, if I can, next year, and keep painting and keep fixing things up, and hopefully, the, the overall appearance throughout the district will improve. You know, and it's like anything else, when you put a fresh coat of paint on a room at home, changes your attitude, and we see that here.
David, quick question on, on the budget.
Sure.
The maintenance and, maintenance of the plant, says an overall increase of forty thousand, but if you look at how the numbers, the increases and decreases don't seem to add up to that, so I don't know if one of those is supposed to be a decrease instead of an increase, or vice versa.
I don't know, I'd have to, I'd, to be honest with you, I'd have to pull a calculator out and look at it again, to see where the, see where the numbers fall.
So, can you get that information to...
Yep.
...to me, and I'll forward it to the board tomorrow, and then we'll have your answers for you?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else, David?
No, I'm good, if, if you're good.
Okay. Anything else, David?
Okay, you're welcome.
Good luck with this water. I see the pail behind you again.
Okay, so, I can tell you what that is. And I know, it's hard to see, but up here, where all the pipes go through, you've got conduits, and you've got heating lines and everything. There's a hole cut in the roof to get up to the air handler, and when they do that, they put a sleeve, and where all this piping goes through, they have to pour in what, what's virtually pitch. It's roofing material. Well, once that started leaking, now we've had cold weather, so you can't really get pitch to, to harden up and solidify the way it is. So, they've tried making repairs on it, and they're going to keep working at it, but hopefully, we'll, we'll resolve it shortly. And the water's just kind of following one of the pipes, and it's ending up right here. So...
David, while we have you at the table, and I'm sorry if it puts you on the spot, could you talk about two other leaks that we have while you're here? One, the tower at the elementary school, which as I know has been the bane since you probably were hired.
Right.
And the second one is the floor at the high school odd.
Okay, so, let's talk about the tower here. Okay, so, let's talk about the tower here. For the most part, the tower is dry. We have a small leak that we are trying to find that is following, well, as you're going up the stairs to the third floor, the right, what will be the right-hand side as you're going up that stairway.
The inside wall.
Right. So, we don't know exactly where the water's coming from, because it's, we think it's coming high, hitting a steel beam, dropping down on some plaster that is on that wall, and running someplace. So, what we're doing is basically monitoring it, and I've talked to so many people already and said, "Look, if you see any water spots or anything in those areas anymore, I need to know right away." So, I've got an infrared camera, I keep looking at it and trying to shoot it to find it, and hopefully, we'll zero in on it and resolve it. The contractor has committed to making sure that that tower is dry.
Are you still thinking it's grout?
Yeah, I still think it's a mortar joint. All right? So, that's the tower. Over at the high school, the air handler for the auditorium, both air handlers were changed out. One sits above the stage, the other one sits above the projection room. The one above the stage, if you're on the stage, if you ever looked at it, on the back wall of it, there's this ladder that goes up to this little dinky door at the top, and then goes into a little penthouse up there. And then, there's ductwork, obviously, that goes out to the auditorium, and then there's ductwork that goes outside to bring in fresh air. So, a couple of things have happened. The contractor that replaced the air handler also was responsible for insulating the ductwork. His insulator that he hired left midstream and went down south and said goodbye. So, he had to find another insulator to come in, and during that period of time, we've had these storms with all the wind, and basically, it's blown the snow into this uninsulated ductwork, melted, came down right on the auditorium floor. So, now, we've got the ductwork insulated, we've talked to the engineers again and said, "Look, you gotta do something different, because the grill is right into the prevailing wind of the high school. We need to be able to draw fresh air from down closer to the roof by putting a gooseneck on." So, they've committed to coming up with a design and figuring out how they're gonna fund that, and putting those goosenecks on the incoming grill work. So, we won't have that wind and snow being blown into the air handlers. Well, once the water dripped down on the floor, and the problem was that when this occurred, was our three-day stretch of no school, so, nobody was here. And the water just dripped onto the stage, and if you, you know, if you do anything with real woodwork, and you just kinda look at this stage here, what happens is that once this gets wet, the wood is gonna swell, and when it swells, it's gonna heave up. And that's exactly what happened at the stage on the high school. It started heaving up, and once that occurs, all the fasteners pop out of the wood, and the only way you can get it back down is you gotta cut reliefs in it, you can put it back down, but eventually, you gotta replace it. So, what my guys did is we cut the reliefs in, took out a section about that big and about 15-foot long, got it screwed back down, put in a filler piece, and then we're gonna have a contractor come in and replace all of the wood once we're sure that the issue has been resolved with the air handler.
You're just trying to create the safety because of the musical.
Exactly. We wanna make sure that the musical can operate and do what it needs to do without having this hump in the floor to contend with. So, and it looks pretty good, and it is pretty flat. It's not perfect, but we can still function right now, which is important, and it's safe.
Dave, I was gonna send you an email, but you're sitting right here.
Sure.
Water in the concession stand, you guys looking at a date, or I see the weather's gonna be cold for a while yet, so, are you not even thinking about it right now?
No. There's a couple of things I'm really gonna start thinking about. One is gonna be water. The second thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna get a price to put in a gas furnace in that place. I don't like those electric heaters that are there. I think they're very expensive to operate when we have to operate them. I know the state would not allow us to put a gas furnace in there, because they weren't happy with us using our gas well.
But they're done?
But they're done. So, I think it's time that we looked at it and do the project on our own, try and save a few dollars and some expense money.
Don't we have to insulate that? Wasn't there an insulation problem?
Well, that's what we're gonna look at, is we'll obviously insulate the ductwork coming down into the areas, but I wanna make sure that, you know, when I, A, put the water on, that we're not gonna run through a, you know, a cold session where we are technically gonna stand a chance of freezing anything up again, you know?
Do you have to insulate the concession stand? My understanding is that wasn't?
There is some. I'm not sure, it's above the ceiling in the attic that I really wanna know about.
Right.
So, we may have to do that, and, you know, I know that, I asked Donnie to have the guy from Goonda who does spray foam come out and look at it. So, we do have at least a number already, and I don't remember what it is off the top of my head.
So, right now, you're just waiting for the temperature to be above freezing before you feel comfortable turning that water on?
Exactly.
And staying above freezing?
Yep.
So that it doesn't freeze the pipe?
Right. And you gotta remember that it's all coming from the high school, so I got all that piping running underground that has to go all the way up there, and, you know, the ground itself.
Is it very to the depth it should be, or is it?
I don't believe it's down more than 24 inches. So, I mean, that's been, that was there when the original field was put in, and the sprinklers were up there, and...
Oh, okay, so, we didn't run through one line? Okay.
No.
I think the first home game's the 19th of March.
Okay? I can't promise you. My crystal ball only works so well.
But wouldn't it be nice to be above 32 in just a couple weeks? I would be really grateful for that.
Yeah? And I don't know when Hilbert's starting to play, but...
They're already up there.
But actual games.
Yeah, I think so. I don't know if it's just practice.
Can we do something with the water buffalo for that game, so they can function?
We'll do something. You know, we'll get you some kinda water up there, yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, we could get somebody, you know, somebody bringing a water?
Yep.
Truck or anything, even if we could go to Hires or see if they would bring the truck up for the night, just so that there was water there, so...
Sure.
Question is how you plumb it in, then?
How do you get toilets to flush?
Right.
And all of our stuff is all wired into all the water line?
Right.
So, there's a way to do it. You have outside spickings on that facility, right?
Right.
So, you can tap in and go backwards?
Um, no.
As long as you had enough pressure.
Well, you gotta remember that they put anti-siphon devices on neat. So, when you try and push water in it, it's coming right back out at you.
Yeah, that hose.
Yep.
The old style you put.
Yep, the old, the old...
You could disconnect the hose and do that.
Yep.
Well, there's a way to do it.
And there's no ice on the lake, so it should warm up faster. That we know.
Yeah.
Even if you have to put something in?
You could be under two feet of snow, though.
Yeah.
An old spicked style?
Mm-hmm.
You could do it that way?
I mean, there's some spots, there's spots where we actually drain the piping system out, that we might be able to put something in. So, we'll see, you know, just pray for good weather. That's all I can tell you right now. I'm ready to go fishing.
Everybody good today?
Okay. All right, Laura.
Okay, now, I'm just gonna move forward, and we're gonna talk about our utility costs. So, as part of the project, we took the Eden Elementary, the bus garage, and the GLP off of COGEN and put it on the grid. And so, when we did last year's budget, we really had no way of judging, because there were no meters in the district since the inception of the COGEN. So, we had no way to tell what the budget costs, and of course, when we do the budget, we have to, not under budget, because we have to be able to pay our bills until June 30th of the following year, 18 months in advance. So, I'm sitting here to tell you some good news. We've had a reduction in our natural gas costs and projections, because the COGEN is not utilizing as much natural gas to produce as much electric, because it's now only running the high school. And then, we had an over-projection in our electric costs, because we needed to make sure we could pay whatever we got for an electric bill. So, overall, we're gonna see a 26% decrease in our utility costs for the district for 1920.
Laura, what's our, the expenses, is that through December 31st?
That line there is through February 27th, the date of the report, when you look at it.
So, realistically, we could double the expenses and feel pretty comfortable that would be your number? Okay?
Well, depending. It all depends on how the weather is and what the usages are, but yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, you pretty much have a solid electric number at this point in time.
Yes, we do.
Turn those electric heaters on and...
Well, there's a, a little bit, if you're not aware of that. As part of this project, one of the things that you did do, and you set up various management systems, you monitor electricity, so, you have to be able to do that. So, when we talk about, what are you gonna go for, and first, you're gonna want that to happen?
Well, and the reason that it's important, what you say, Lucinda, can you hear Mr. Martin when he doesn't use the mic, or no?
No.
So, she's gonna need you to use the mic. Is because we couldn't even project, because it wasn't metered. I remember having an awful lot of conversation about this when we were planning the project.
Correct.
You couldn't even project what was gonna happen between buildings.
Mm-hmm.
That'd be very helpful, and I will let Fluent Energy, who runs the school municipal energy consortium, which is where we purchase our electricity from, know that, because I'm sure they'll be telling you what they would like us to monitor for them.
Right, and we did segregate this building and bus garage, even though electrically, they're connected.
Excellent, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So, now, I wanna move on to our debt service. Yep, it's our last page, it's the one with a lot of writing on it, and it's gonna be my segue into the property tax cap. So, what is debt service? Because it's a term that I wanna make sure everyone understands. Debt service is essentially our mortgage payment plus the interest that we're paying for past and the current capital project. So, what happens is we go out and we take a bond, it's a municipal bond, so it's tax-free for those who are earning interest, and then we have to pay that back plus interest to whatever bank we utilize, or if it's depository trust. And so, each year, we look at where we are in our amortization schedules. Now, this year, you'll see that there was a $673,000 increase in the cost of our total bonds and our payments for our mortgage and our debt service. That's because we're now at 96% completion of the capital project, and we did a bond anticipation note, which is a one-year loan that we take to help pay for the project, because we don't go to bonding for this current project till we're all done. So, of that, we took the full amount this year, so that we could pay all our bills as we went through, because the anticipation was, come December 31st, the project would be complete. Well, this is one time, and one time only, that the delay in the project not being complete is good news, because that means we saved enough money in phases one, two, and three with good bidding and good architecture work and construction management helping us to keep our costs down to enable us to do a phase four. So, until phase four is completely done, we won't be at 100% completion, and right now, we're hoping that will happen by end of September of 2019, and it's gonna allow us to install some safety items, like brand-new PA system, the blue lights for on the buildings, and some clocks throughout the buildings. So, things that are much-needed upgrades in their safety and enhancements to the district. So, while we're getting more in our mortgage payment, that was authorized by the voters back in December of 2015, when they approved the project. It was very, presented very openly that, in the newsletter, that there would be an increase due to this new project, and so now, we're starting to see that increase in our debt service payment. Any questions? All right, now, I'm gonna bore you to death with my property tax cap calculation. Are you guys all set back there?
Yeah.
All right. So, we're gonna start talking about the terminology that's used in the property tax cap, because I'm pretty sure most people don't use this terminology in their personal lives. We're gonna talk about capital exclusions, of which the BOSI's capital projects are never included, it's only district funds. The theory on the capital exclusions is that when we went out for referendums and we got authorizations to do capital projects, the voters said yes then. So, those are things they've already said yes they will pay for. And then, we're gonna talk about the actual calculation, I'm gonna bore you to death, line by line, and then the tax levy threshold, which is the maximum amount of dollars and percentage that a district can go out with, staying within the property tax cap that requires a simple majority of 50% plus one in the vote. So, we're gonna start with the tax-based growth factor. It's provided by the New York State Office of Real Property Tax Service, and it represents the new buildings in our community. So, when I drive down Jennings, when I come in in the morning, I see there's some new houses going up. So, when they're assessed, last March, whatever percentage of completion they were assessed at, it creates a factor that is sent to the Office of Real Property Tax Service, and then they tell us what our growth factor is. This year, it's .0071, which is down from .008 last year, and that could simply be that some things were further in construction last year than they are this year, or they're less farther along this year. That is held by the assessors, they send the information up to Office of Real Property Tax Service, and they give us a factor sometime in February for completing this. Then, we have the allowable levy growth factor, which is provided by the New York State Controller's Office. They average the consumer price index, the CPI, over 12 months. This year, that average is 2.13. The CPI is supposed to be an indicator of inflation, and that's kind of important, because this is the first time in a long time that that number has been higher than 2%. So, for 1920, in our calculation, remember when they said it was a 2% cap? The 2% is part of the calculation, that's it. So, right now, we're capped at 2%, which is .13% less than what they perceive inflation to be. So, right now, off the bat, we're gonna be fighting, trying to keep costs within the budgetary restraints for how others have raised their prices, as Mr. Martin had talked about, when he talked about his costs going up for the Buildings and Grounds Department. More terminology. Payments in lieu of taxes. Have you ever heard of pilots, and not the ones that drive the planes? But these are negotiated reductions in property taxes. They're negotiated by the Erie County Industrial Development Agency, the IDA, with the goal being, if a company wants to come in and start a business, they give them up to 10 years at a lower tax rate, continually working it up to full assessment for new business expansion and improvement. The goal behind this is to generate jobs, and I know we've heard a lot about that, that sometimes the jobs aren't there, but that's the whole point of a pilot. While this doesn't seem familiar in Eden, it's because we currently have no pilots going on. And then, there's an available carryover, which is, when we do the tax cap calculation, it's the amount of calculation before exclusions that weren't used the prior year. So, for example, if you had 2% the prior year, and you only levied 1% before exclusions, you would have those dollars to carry over. This year, we have nothing available for carryover. So, then, the only thing we have is that in the tax cap for exclusions is capital exclusion, because we didn't have a 2% increase in either the employee retirement system costs or the teacher retirement system costs. We didn't have any torts or legal claims that we had to pay out, so, we only have a capital exclusion for our district. So, last year, our capital exclusion... So, last year, our capital exclusion was technically at zero. It was actually a negative number because we had some debt service fall off before the project fully came on. So, it gave us a negative, and that's why last year, we had a .46 increase, $66,000 for property taxes. So, this year, our capital exclusion, which represents, as Don had pointed out to me earlier today, $456,000 of pre-authorized expenditures for our mortgage payment that was done in So, here's the fun calculation. So, you see, our tax growth factor, .0071, is there. Our allowable levy growth factor is 2%. And our prior year levy was at $14.3 million. So, we take last year's levy of 14.3 and we multiply it times .0071 to see if those dollars were in there for assessments, where would we be? Well, we'd be at $14.4 million. We would have to add back last year's pilots receivable that we had, which we had none. And then, we would subtract out torts and judgments that we had last year and any capital exclusions, which we had none of those. So, then, we start with our adjusted prior year tax levy. Now, right now, it's only been adjusted by the growth factor for our property assessments. And then, we put in our base growth factor, which is the 2% because we're at the maximum. Remember, that's .13 less than inflation. So, that puts us at $14.7 million that we can raise in taxes before any exclusions, just based on where we're going. I forgot to keep an eye on... Okay. So, now, we're going to move to the next slide, and we're going to see, this is where our exclusions come in for the current year. We don't have any torts and judgments. This is a good thing. We don't have any ERIs exemption or TRIs exemption. Again, good things, meaning that the cost for the retirement systems...
That's next. I'm going to do a beep for you, like, remember when we were kids? Okay?
So, then, we're going to add in the capital levy share of the $456,000. And that amount represents the debt service less the state aid. So, do you remember when we said we had $673,000 of new debt service? Well, some of that, we received state aid on, so the net amount is this $456,000. So, we could raise our taxes to our total levy. Now, I want to be clear on this because this is where people get confused all the time. The levy is the total amount we can collect. It has nothing to do, at this point, if we have equalization rates change, we can still only level in our entire taxable community $15 million if that were what we set the levy at, this board set the levy at. So, we would have an increase in dollars of $846,000, a 5.9% increase. So, that's what the calculations say that we, this Board of Education could authorize us to tax, try to get the voters to approve with a simple majority of 50% plus one. Okay? Are we all there on this? Because then, we're going to go to the next slide, and here is the decision that I need from the board. Doesn't have to be official, but I need an answer. And there's one simple question that I have to answer before March 1st. Do you plan to override the tax cap for the year ending June 30th, 2020 levy? Yes or no? So, do you plan to raise taxes higher than 5.9%?
No.
Okay. So, that is what I will be putting in my report that on the next slide is...
Barb, do you need, do you need to do, Paul, to do a vote on that?
No, it's not required.
No, it's not required. Okay.
It's not required.
And as we know from Tom, as we got answered last year, that doesn't mean anything. We can change that at any time, right up until we get the ballots printed.
That is correct, and I would just simply go in and put it there. But for March 1st, I needed to know the direction this Board of Education was planning to take the levy cost. So, right now, I'm going to go back and tell the Controller that we're not planning on looking for a supermajority. We're only looking for a simple majority of 50% plus one. So, then, on the next slide, you'll see, this calculation that I have done, I have to put in the software for New York State Office of State Controller by March 1st so that they can start to gather their information and start to promote how many districts are going for an override. This is, when you see it in the paper, this is how they know. They gather it from this site, which we're all mandated to put in by March 1st. And that's why they tried to get us our numbers. I think it was the beginning of February, we finally had the numbers for the Office of Real Property. And then, they finalized, two weeks ago, the number for the growth factor, and we all kind of assumed it was going to be at 2% up until then.
But the state doesn't have to pass their budget until April 1st, so we actually have to make the commitment before we know the exact amount we're getting from the state aid because it can be changed from the governor's first run.
Very rarely is it the same as the governor's first run, and we've been lucky the past five or six years with on-time budgets, but there's always a potential that they don't have a budget in place by April 1st. And then, we play the game of, we have to finalize our numbers, figuring out, not knowing what state aid will be.
Last year, it was not on time. It was almost the middle of the month because we were waiting to approve our budget. Yeah, they were at least 15 days late last year.
So, that's what happens now in years past. They were much later than the 15 days. There were times that they were at the end of the school year and they still hadn't come up with an adopted budget for the state. So, there are some things that have changed. This is for Jen, as she goes out and does the pieces for us, for people to do lobbying. And some of the things that have changed in Albany is the past five, six years at least, we had a division in control. So, we had a governor of one party, we had an assembly of another party, and a senate of another party. So, we had the two parties in control of everything, but there was a division of power. The assembly controlled one, and the senate was controlled by the other party. This year is the first time in a long time that the same political party has control of the governor's office, the assembly, and the senate. And where that is a little concerning from where I sit, because I don't really know where to advise you yet, is in the past, the governor would put out his runs, the assembly would tack on a little bit, and then, the senate would give final numbers, which usually were more generous, to the school districts. This year, no one really knows what to expect because it's of the alignment of the one So, is there anything else I can answer for you tonight?
So, Laura, quick question, just to verify. So, basically, we're now starting to see the vote from December of 2015 on the capital project in regards to this $456,000 coming into our calculations now, which the voters back in December of 2015 voted for these projects, and now, it's time to come to pay the piper.
Essentially, yes, because I believe you have the number there, if you could share it with everyone, of how much per $100,000 home, we thought that would increase their taxes per year when they authorized this project.
So, back on December 15th of 2015, we authorized $34.79 per $100,000 assessed value.
And the good part is that we have had some growth in the community. We have a higher tax cap calculation than we've had, at least in last year. And so, that should help to maybe minimize the impact on each home with that amount, even if we go out for the full amount.
And then, moving forward, like what happened in the 1718 budget to the 1819 budget, where we had an influx come in and we had to take it out, so we basically started the peaks and valleys. Now, going with this and this capital project that then needs to be paid off, we then step up to a plateau, and the plateau should be relatively flat moving forward for the next number of years.
Correct. Although, we do have some other projects that will be falling off in about three or four years, and we would want to look at potentially doing another project because while it's an exclusion, it goes in the tax cap calculation, it also brings 72% to 82% depending of state dollars in to relieve the local taxpayers of that share because when you do a project, it's usually estimated that 95% of what you're doing is actually going to receive aid because there's little things that they'll disqualify here and there. But you're going to get 72 to 82 cents on every dollar that you spend from New York State in your state aid runs. And when you looked at our state aid runs, when we talked about them before, our state aid went up significantly in our building aid area, and that's because we're getting the aid back on the project because we're spending the money. So, in 2122, we're looking at that potentially, we're going to have a falling off of some of our debt service. And my goal is to keep that level so that we don't have what we had last year. The year before, it was over 4%. Then, it went down to .46. And this year, we could go as high as 5.9 with a simple majority. That's peaks and valleys, and if we wanted to keep it flat, we started, in 2015, the voters authorized a project. In 2019, that project is going to finish. So, we have to get moving and planning and ready for the next project. Doesn't have to be a $22 million project. You can do a smaller project. You can do roofs, you can do windows, other things that the district needs. But in bringing in that state assistance, that's always good for the local taxpayers.
So, of this 5.9% calculation, 3.1% of it is actually related to the capital project. So, that's, to me, that's our starting base. So, if you want to say a 0% increase, is actually 3.1% increase because that's where you really got to start out because that was what was approved back in December of 15.
That's a good way to look at it. Can you repeat that, though? Sandy didn't hear it.
Okay. So, of this 5.9% calculation that's out there for us to consider, 3.1% of that is related to the capital project that's now coming on to the formula. So, if you want to say a 0% increase is really a 3.1% increase because really, the voters approved 3.1 when they passed this capital project back in 12 of 15.
So, what does that mean to the board?
I'm just saying, at 3.1. Because, to me, the 3.1 was already approved back in December, and now, it's time to pay the piper. It's, the bills due.
And their taxes is here, 3.1%.
Right. So, I mean, if we went out at a zero, let's say we went out, we wanted to go out at zero this year. You really can't go out at zero. You've got to go out at 3.1 because 3.1 is what was been approved back in December of 2015. Yeah.
And remember, just because you're talking 3.1 of the levy, does not mean every household is at 3.1%. That's changed by all of the demographics of an individual piece of property. So, our next meeting is on March 6th, and we're going to be, again, talking about the budget. That's going to be staffing benefits and, uh-oh. Yes, athletics and the BOSI's and technology. So, we're going to start finalizing, wrapping things up so that when we hit March 20th, I will have some scenarios, we'll have all the numbers. Nothing will be a total shock to you, even though you haven't seen it all put together. You have seen the parts, you know what areas will be going up, what areas will be staying flat, things like that. And that will help us to make, help me to provide you with the information you need for your decisions. I will present three scenarios because we still won't know what the legislature's done. I'll be surprised if we know. It would be nice. It would make our lives easier. But March 31st is their deadline, and so, I don't really foresee getting any information ahead of time. And then, in April, at the April board meeting, you'll be asked to adopt a budget so that we can be in line with the deadlines for New York State for reporting what we're doing and so, we can get the advertising going so we can start letting people know what the impacts.
Make a motion to go to executive session?
Second, any discussion or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.